All right, I call to order our city council meeting. Tonight is Wednesday, August ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. All members of the council are present with the exception of Councilmember Jacob, who is at the Water District Meeting and will be joining us here shortly. And Councilmember Pack is anticipated to be here momentarily as well. We're joined by council office staff. We're joined by Mayor Burton, various members of staff, as well as the public, both in person and online. And our first item of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by our city attorney, Josh Chandler. Mr. Chandler. Will the audience please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Chandler. I'll note that Councilmember Pack has joined us as well. And that brings us to public comment. This is the time for anybody who has anything they'd like to share with the council to do so. Typically, we don't engage in back and forth. We just want to listen and hear what you have to say. It does not have to be about anything on the agenda, though it could be. People are given up to three minutes to speak on any topic you'd like. We do ask that you try and help maintain the decorum of the meeting. We do also note that anonymous comments are not accepted during the meeting. Therefore, if you're joining us online, we would ask that you state your name and city of residence, and also if you are in person, to state your name and city of residence. So, with that, we'll start with those who are here in person. Is there anybody who would like to share with the city council during public comments right now? All right, for those of you who are online, there are a few. Please hit the little button to raise your hand to indicate that you'd like to speak. And then we'll give you up to three minutes to do so. And we'll start with Brett Segmiller. Let me hit the button to allow you to talk. Mr. Segmiller, you should be able to unmute yourself at this point.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can. Please proceed. You'll have, please introduce yourself, your city of residence, and then you'll have three minutes.
All right, my name is Brett Segmiller. I live in West Jordan, sixty-two, thirty-three, West Swan Ridge.
Okay, thank you. I was just gonna say you don't need to do address, just city of residence.
All right, um, okay, I just wanted to bring up a concern with regards with the city potentially punching through Ninetieth South at New Bingham and connecting the road there. My house backs that, and talking with some neighbors, we're not in favor of that happening. We feel that with the city's kind of their vision of a walking, if you will, neighborhood, you got Ronwood Park, and now you're gonna add basically a five to seven-lane highway right behind all this house, so that's gonna really, uh, because there's another subdivision that that road's gonna split in half if that gets connected. We also, we're worried about the concern with the kids. A lot of kids cross that street right now, going back and forth between subdivisions, and what that, the potential impact that's gonna have for safety for them as well. Talking with a few neighbors, we've thought about proposing to put a light out on sixty-four hundred West, tying in at New Bingham. And then you can tie the road in from out there out to U one eleven. Our biggest, another concern as we had is New Bingham's already existing. The road is big enough there to widen it if need be. It's already one lane going west, and I believe two lanes coming east, so just wanted to voice our concern and opposition for that road being connected.
All right, thank you very much. Next up, we have Mr. Wilkinson. Let me hit the button to allow you to speak again if you would state your name and city of residence, and then you can have up to three minutes.
Hi. Are we good?
Yep, we're good. We can hear you.
Oh, let's do this. Ryan Wilkinson, I live in West Jordan. To the last guy who just spoke, they're not gonna do anything. They're probably laughing at you in their heads right now. They're not gonna do a thing about your comment. As evidence of that, I sent them an email two and a half months ago to all seven city council members, and no one has responded to that yet. Very simple, just asked a couple of very simple questions. We went over this at the last city council meeting, and I thought for sure I'd hear from somebody, even if it was a thank you for your comment or something like that, but no, still nothing. So, I, I don't know. I had some, some comments. I was going to continue with, with what I was talking about last or two weeks ago. But something happened today I thought I just mentioned. So I constantly discuss the, the airport there that no one seems to, well, it's acknowledged as a problem in your own city plan, but no one does anything about, and hasn't for, for well over a decade. I know that because the same language in your city plan is used now verbatim as it was over ten years ago. Same, same problem is acknowledged. I've been told that there's nothing you can do by at least three of the council members and the mayor. Nothing you can do, no thing. So the other night, Monday night, there's a helicopter flying around. It's quite low, below three hundred feet. Belongs to Utah State University's helicopter training program. I had a discussion with them today. I took about forty minutes, talked to three different people, and they have acknowledged that this is a problem. I was given a phone number to call if it happens again. They're going to do things on their end to alleviate this problem. So you're welcome, number one. But getting back to my point here, you said there's nothing you can do. I did something today because I'm not lazy and stupid and feckless, and I care. That's why I was able to get results today. So, so take a good look at yourselves and ask yourselves why you couldn't do the same thing, please. Am I, am I, is that it?
You still have thirty-five seconds.
Oh, fantastic. I was watching the little thing countdown.
No, there are a lot of things.
Okay, um, I, you know, I've been told there's nothing you could do, but I did something. I'm a layperson, just a guy, not special. And I got this thing shut down, and they acknowledged it was a problem. They even apologized to me this was going on. This is a dangerous thing. The Utah Air National Guard has crashed two helicopters in about the last eighteen months, and those same pilots are probably still flying around your community there. Uh, and you guys sit, and you applaud it. You don't just tolerate it, you celebrate it. I refuse to do that. I got it shut down. I got a problem shut down in your community. I'd like to send you an invoice for my time for, for getting this done. I'll send it to your risk management if you want.
You know, time, we are at that time. So, thank you for your comments. And is there anybody else who would like to address the council today? Either in person or online. If you're online, please hit the icon to raise hand. I don't see anyone who's dialed in just by phone. And I'm not seeing anybody in, in chambers running for the mic, so we will close public comment and turn to reports to the city council. Is there anybody who has a report back on council items to share? Start with Councilmember Whitelock, and then go to Councilmember Green.
So Utah Leaks of Cities and Towns, their ad hoc committee that I'm serving on, on childcare. They're looking at ways that the city can help, so it was really nice that we had already had talked about allowing daycares in more areas. So I could share that with them, but they're also looking at other ways to help with the childcare need that exists in our state that is an unmet need. And I can tell you from social media that there is a lot because there are, there are moms out there all the time asking where's a good childcare place or who babysits in their homes. So if you have ideas that you would like brought back to this committee, please share them with me so that I can share them with them. What they're looking to do is we had Representative Pulso for there. And I can't remember his name, Johnny something. Anyway, they're looking at ways the legislature can help, which sometimes the legislature is helpful, and sometimes they give us unfunded mandates. So if you have ideas, share with me so I can share with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Green.
Yeah, I gotta get my computer to work here, too. Yesterday, we had the Association of Municipal Council Meeting. It was a tour of the new Murray City Hall. Very nice building. I will tell you that one thing that they learned from West Jordan was not to block the great U by an elevator shaft, so. But it's a very, very beautiful building. Cost them about, from what I remember them saying yesterday, about thirty-four million, so I am super happy that ours remodels only cost in ten. But it was interesting to note that there was a city council member, and I'll just, I make this note before I transition to a couple other comments. There was a city council member from another city here in the southwest, southwest part of the valley that says, when was your city hall built? I mean, no, I know you're being, it's being remodeled. When's your city hall built? And, and I said, about thirty years ago, I think. And he said, the thing that's interesting about your city hall is the way it was designed, it doesn't look old. And so I think that's a positive for the city is that, that once we get a new, once, once we get the remodel finished, we'll have a very nice functional building. The one thing I am envious of Murray City, though, is you know how we were putting the divider in, in council chambers, and we have the divider, the accordion divider? The one that Murray's got twice as cool because it's actually glass that you can see through. And they use it to divide between their council chambers and their council work chamber, and it is the coolest divider I have ever seen because it looks like a glass wall, but you can see the pocket that it folds up into if they need it. It is so, it, that, I'm envious of that. You, you all should have seen an email from me today. The council was invited to attend Governor's Day with the Utah National Guard on September ninth, if I remember right. If you want to go, please RSVP to the Adjutant General's Office. They're inviting us. And so, if you want to go, please RSVP. Last but not least, just a couple of comments. Day before yesterday, if you didn't know, was Purple Heart Day. We recognize those combat wounded and the sacrifices that they have made for the country. If you did not know or pay attention to history, today is the seventy-eighth anniversary of when the United States employed a nuclear weapon on Nagasaki, Japan. While the justification was that it prevented thousands of deaths, there were still thousands that were affected by the dropping of a nuclear weapon. And my hope is that we never have to ever do that again. And I will leave my comments at that.
All right, so I'm not seeing any other council reports. The semi-report that I have, quarterly council government meeting that was scheduled for August seventeenth has been canceled, so I won't have an update on that till after our November sixteenth meeting. And with that, we'll go to Mr. Anderson for a council office report.
So thank you, council chair and council. Just have two things to report. Number one is just a reminder that the ULCT Annual Conference is coming up on September sixth through eighth. A couple of you have responded, and I just need to know probably by this week so that that's when the early bird registration ends. So just want to make sure each of you have an opportunity. That is a budgeted event. The last thing, I've contacted each of you individually. Just want to let you know I have extended an offer to a new employee who will take Ms. Hanson's place as the policy analyst for the city council. Mr. Hallmark is planning to start on August twenty-eighth. If I can get him to come at one of the next couple of council meetings, I will. So you can introduce him, but expect to see him on the meeting on September thirteenth. And that is all I have for my report tonight. Thank you, council.
All right, thank you. Mayor Burton.
Good afternoon. It's a beautiful day today. Thanks for letting me join your meeting today. Couple of, well, a highlight is our cyber incident. We're making good progress there. People getting their utility bills, and we're getting caught up there. Our phones are working. We have access to a great deal of our information. We're making really good progress. So thank you for your patience working with this. Staff has gone circles above and beyond in order to find ways to work around this and make progress. So added ways to all of our staff. They were already busy, and we added extra work on their forum with this, and they stepped up to the plate and they hit it out of the ballpark. So we're real pleased with that. You, you provided us with a general plan update, so thank you for doing that. We are now getting ready because we have that in place to do our general transportation plan update. We will connect with our adjoining cities because that affects us, them, as well as it does us. So we're gonna get some input from them. First, when we get this, we'll bring that to you for you to approve. But if you are interested in having some council input early on, I'd like you to select a council member who could come and meet with us early on to share some of the vision that the council would like in our transportation plan. And that might make it a little bit easier for you when it gets to you later on after the work is done in there. So take a look at yourselves and see if you want to choose someone for that. There's lots of construction going on here. Brian's gonna just talk about some of it. Greg would talk to us about some sewer lines going in, but he's not here, so I'll just give you a short update on that. The work on Copper Hills Parkway, that's a sewer line going in there. We've asked the contractor to get the work done, if you can at all possible, in front of Copper Hills High School before Copper Hills High School opens up. So they are concentrating on that area now. Then they will move out of that area when school starts and get the other areas to line. So be assured that kids will be able to attend school at Copper Hills this fall. They're also doing some sewer line work, as you may have seen over by Ronwood Park. That one is really deep, so they have a lot of shoring things they need to do to take that happen, which slows it down. It should be wrapped up in a couple more weeks. It's quite inconvenient if you're going to the food trucks because you can only enter from the one side. So fortunately, there is no way to get in there. The food trucks are still doing well. We have our food trucks yesterday along with our market. And we've got some good markets there. If you haven't been to those, I know some of you have because I've seen you there. So thank you for joining us and attended those. So that is my report. I'll pass it on to Corbin, unless you have a question for me.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Mayor. Yes, I mentioned, I'd just follow up regarding both of those construction progress, projects on Ronwood Parkway and also Copper Hills Parkway. Thank you for mentioning that prior to the commencement of the academic school year, if I understand correctly, that there won't be the construction in that area just adjacent to the front doors of Copper Hills. Is that, is that indeed correct, as you mentioned?
That's right. Our goal is to have that done in front of the building so they can have easy access. Although parts will be moved away from the building, it'll still be on the parkway.
Thank you. That was my follow-up question. When you say it'll move away, is it gonna move away in both directions, or will it just progress to the east?
It's going in both directions. It started from the east and it's working its way up. It may still be there to the east.
Okay.
Depending on how the progress goes.
So we'll still probably have just one lane.
Possibility.
Okay.
Fortunately, that road is wide and gives them flexibility, and they can still have convenient access, even though it may not be right in front of the building.
Okay, great, thank you. And I've been in contact with the district, and also we've talked about that left-hand turn traveling west, trying to turn into Copper Hills Parkway.
And that will be.
Construction, that's gonna be a challenge. Maybe at some point in the future, that might be two lanes entering into the Copper Hills property because it's hard with the right-hand turn and left-hand turn merging into one lane. We'll, we'll keep working on that.
In order to do that, that needs to be signalized, and so that would need to be warrant, which means not right now.
Long process, exactly. And then just double checking on Ronwood Parkway. That will be completely wrapped up. There won't be anything else needed with the sewer line once that's completed from the west side of the street to the east side.
So I'm gonna let Corbin take this. The roundabout will be done. The other work is still going for eighty-six hundred. That's separate from the sewer line, and that work continues. Anything you want to add to that, Corbin?
Sorry, councilman. The sewer line project is the only thing that's blocking Ronwood Parkway, but there will still be lots of construction in the area as the Wheels Park construction begins and as the eighty-sixth South Bridge continues. But the north-south road access through that circle and through Ronwood Park will be opened back up after the sewer project's done.
Great, thank you. And is the date still before the end of the commencement of the academic school year? That's still gonna overlap it by about a week or so?
Are you talking about Ronwood?
Yes, yes, please. Yeah, Ronwood.
That one, that work will continue after the school starts. The roundabout will be open, but eighty-six hundred South will be still in construction, and the work will still be happening for the Wheels Park.
Thank you. And that's what I was assuming. I just told the residents that I'd follow up, especially with school starting. There's been concern on both of those projects, although everyone is grateful that they will have working sewer lines. Thank you very much.
Thanks for going with the flow.
All right, Mr. Lee.
Just two items for you this evening. First, I have Chief Valentine, Chief Bell here for a special presentation and recognition. I'd like to turn a few minutes of my time over to them, and then after that, Brian Clegg has an update on some Capitol projects and public works.
Yep, we would like to take this opportunity. In fact, Detective Sullivan, if you wouldn't mind being embarrassed and coming up here. But we, we just wanted to take this opportunity to recognize Detective Ben Sullivan. He is currently assigned to the Salt Lake Area Gang Project and was recently given quite a, an honor. He was recognized by the Utah Gang Investigators Association as their Detective of the Year. I know, and I'm, I don't want to delve into what I know Chief Valentine wants to talk about, but Detective Sullivan has done such an outstanding job, and that particular recognition and award is just scratching the surface, and I'd like to turn some time over to Chief Valentine to talk a little bit more specifically about what Ben has accomplished.
Scratching the surface actually is really accurate in this case. He dressed up really fancy tonight. I'm impressed. I hope you are, too. But this is not terribly uncommon for Detective Sullivan. He's previously received other, in my opinion, more prestigious honors, being Utah Chiefs of Police Association Officer of the Year from a a large agency. I think you may well remember, he has in the past been one of our Employee of the Year Award recipients here in West Jordan. I, correct me if I'm mistaken, Ben, but I've counted up five different sheriff stars given by the United Police Department or the Sheriff's Office over the years, as well as the Metro Gang Unit Project Director Award, Medal of Distinction from the Utah Narcotics Officers Association. I could go on. You know, I've told some of you individually, and I think I've said this publicly before, anytime there's a homicide in the city, I pretty much plan writing a check for your money for about thirty thousand dollars. It's actually gone up just a bit because we know what the overtime is. That amount just continues to go up and up and up when we don't identify suspects. And, you know, I know that people don't really get excited hearing about violent crime in the city, but it does happen, and for the most part, you don't read about it on KSL, and you don't hear about it, and I think that's, I think that's great, but I just was paging through some of our records for the last couple of years and back in, way back in two thousand and twenty-two, Detective Sullivan was the one who identified, wrote the search warrant for identifying the suspect in a current homicide. In that search warrant that he served with our officers, they recovered eight firearms, including a couple of assault rifles, and multiple pounds of drugs. I know this probably surprises you, right, that gunfights happen often because of drugs. Yeah, I know, big surprise. Twenty-twenty-one, another homicide that he identified from another agency. Again, wrote a search warrant. They went and found the murder weapon. I did ask him before if I could drop some, some names. You know, we, we do have social clubs in the valley, and some of those social clubs have branches here in West Jordan. They're known as the Bloods. And the Florencia and Soreños, and they have some other colorful names. That's probably enough for now unless you want to toss any others. And many times, they've been involved in shooting our triple homicide from last year, was a gang-related homicide. Because of Detective Sullivan's work, we were able to very quickly identify the suspects in that case and bring that case. It's, it's moving towards a successful resolution, but also just in the course of doing that, a search warrant that, that picked up two fully automatic rifles, assault rifles, seventeen firearms, a large amount of cocaine, ecstasy, marijuana, oxycodone. You know, I could go on. I could talk about a homicide that he actually identified a suspect who had left this state, moved into, to striving across the country to escape, was caught in Nebraska. I'm gonna stop. Are you turning red yet? I can't ever tell. Just a little, you always this color. You know, we have some great police officers in this city, and you get to see some of them. They often appear, you know, doing great stuff, and they're, you know, they're out there in their uniform. There, there are different kinds of heroes. There are heroes who shine in the face of great adversities and moments of crisis, but there are also other heroes that live among us, work among us, and do their work unceremoniously and under conditions that often are not very great, and they're unnoticed by many of us, but they often make the greatest difference in our communities. So on behalf of the Police Department and really on behalf of over a hundred thousand residents here in West Jordan, I just want to express my appreciation for Detective Sullivan and help you get just a glimpse of some of the violence that you don't see, some of the crime that you don't see, some of the drugs that don't enter our high schools, our junior high schools because of this man's work. And then, and then just think of how he multiplies that by the training that he does and the leadership that he provides for officers. This truly is one of our quietest cops ever, and he's not quiet when it comes to sharing his talents with, with others. My final word is this. None of you are home, right? See, keen observer detective, I figured that out. Well, when things are happening at night, when things are happening in the middle of the night, and our patrol officers need resources, they need help finding suspects, they call Ben Sullivan. He may not be at home, and certainly if he is, he's taken away from his wife and daughter who are here tonight. And that's really where, if we have a debt of gratitude, that's really where it's owed. So, thank you. Ben, would you like to leave the council? And you can also talk on YouTube.
Give me the keys. Thank you, guys. I appreciate the time and invitation, so thanks a lot.
Thanks, Council Chair and Council. Just a quick update on a couple of projects on thirteen-hundred West. Dominion Energy is still working on thirteen-hundred West. We've extended their, I call it real estate, the road length. City's worked on, working with them to get, give them more real estate so they can trench more quicker. The road length, um, city's worked on, uh, working with them to get, uh, give them more real estate so they can trench more quicker. Um, and get out of the right way of the road. It's slated right now to be done November, December, um, twenty-twenty-three. No. Anyway, it's moving forward. They're, they're starting to trench more. Uh, we're working, staff and I are both working closely with Dominion to move them along. Um, so that's, it is moving along. It's, I know it's frustrating to the residents and others that live over there enough to drive that, but hopefully we'll be done by November. Secondly, oh, go ahead.
Quick question on that one. Um, actually just a concern. I've noticed on multiple occasion, the access to the cemetery has been blocked. Not by active trenching, but rather by cones that have been set up or sometimes equipment that's just sitting there. If there's something that can be done to maintain that open, I, I, I don't know if that's just a nice request of Dominion or their contractor, but it's something that I've had a couple of conversations about.
I, I will speak to them. They're gonna be doing a bore pit there to bore under seventy-eight, so that's probably why they've had it closed, cuz they're potholing to see utilities.
Th- this was on a Sunday with just a whole bunch of cones stacked up. My mom was not happy.
Never mind then. I will follow up with them. Um, secondly, uh, phase one of the thirteen-hundred West widening, which is from ninety-four-hundred South to ninetieth. Uh, is, the contractor will be mobilizing on Monday. Um, it's a hundred-day build. Again, barring no bad weather and some issues we're working through with Rocky Mountain, so it is moving forward though. And then hopefully phase two will follow next year after Dominion's out of the way, so. That's the latest. Any questions?
I do have a question. We saw, we saw uh, problems with our friends to the south with all the rain. Uh, we won't mention Draper. Did we have, with, with all the rain that we had, did we have any problems or issues with all the rainwater that we had the, the last?
I only jump in here. That's actually Greg's department instead of his, but the answer is minimal. We did have one house that got water in a garage, but not in the house portion. And another resident that got flooded in their backyard. So, we were very fortunate. We didn't have the same experience that that some of the other cities had on the east side. So, we were fortunate there.
Well, that's right. That is in a different department now.
Yes.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Further reports for me?
All right.
Mayor, I'm, 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 I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw the mayor under the bus and, and Councilmember Whitelaw. Um, I'm disappointed you didn't talk about visiting Bingham Creek Library today for their twenty-fifth anniversary and what a great community event that was. I was gonna let Councilmember McConaughey talk about that.
I was gonna wait till the end.
Yeah, that's, that's council comments, sir.
Well, but I was, I was surprised he didn't say it in his mayor's report.
All right. So, if there are no other reports from the mayor's office or CAO for the city, we'll go or to the city council, we'll move on to our first business item. Which is regarding purchase of real estate. Uh, Mr. Davidson, this one's got your name on it.
Meeting members of the city council. The item. The item, there we go. The item before you tonight is a uh, resolution for consideration of a real estate purchase and sale agreement with the Jones family for purchase of four-point-three-six acres. Uh, to be dedicated and specifically used for water infrastructure in a future fire station. The property is located, uh, the fire station piece is located approximately sixty-eight-hundred West along the future ninetieth South corridor in that area. And the water infrastructure parcel is located off of New Bingham Highway. And will serve what we affectionately call here in the city, the Zone Five Pressure Zone. This is a purchase that is negotiated at one-point-three million dollars or a little under three-hundred thousand dollars per acre. Earlier in, uh, several years ago, as part of negotiations with parties associated with the Jones Ranch Development, there was a plan to include the acquisition of this property as part of an overall infrastructure agreement. Uh, as you recall, you approved that infrastructure agreement. And that, since that time of approval, that uh, infrastructure agreement has sat idle earlier in and was not signed by the other party. Uh, earlier in the year, the Jones family approached the city and said, our preference would be to work directly with the city in the negotiation and purchase of these real property parcels and not be uh, entwined into this infrastructure agreement. And so in consideration of the Jones family, we entered into negotiations separate from uh, the Jones Ranch Development, specifically Ivory and the Gardner Company, and have negotiated this purchase with the Jones family directly. So what you have before you is consideration for, like I said, four-point-three-six acres of property at a negotiated, a, a appraised price of one-point-three million dollars.
All right, Councilmember Green.
Couple of questions. Um, the one-point-three million, is that in the current budget? Where, where are we pulling the money from and do we need a budget amendment for that?
Those, those monies, uh, from what I understand are included as impact fee expenditures. And so they would come from our current fiscal budget impact fee, uh, allocations.
Okay. Denise, do we need to amend the budget for that? Okay. And then the next question is, I didn't see any sort of appraisal in the packet. Is, is this based on an appraised value?
It is. Earlier in the year, we, uh, in cooperation with our property administrator, David Clements, we did a call for and receive a appraisal on both of those parcels. Uh, I have not included, I did not include the appraisal in this, uh, uh, in the packet. I'd be happy to provide it to you, but it is representative of appraised value.
I just wanna make sure we're not pay, paying above appraised value.
We are, we are not paying above appraised value.
Councilmember Whitelock.
I would like to see that and I would request that in the future it be in our packets for the appraisal, okay? I just, and this may be Mr. Maxfield versus you, Jamie, but uh, I'm concerned of where we're purchasing property and I want that on the record for this fire station. Um, nine-thousand South, we've got I know that what I heard, and I believe it was Mr. Maxfield that said, well, we've got the one on fifty-six-hundred and about sixty-three-hundred.
Sixty-two-hundred, yeah.
Um, but that isn't ours. We don't control it. They've shut it down once. It can be shut down again. And we really don't have anything over there if that happens. So while I'm not against getting this property, because it could be used to get other property in the future if need be, I am concerned that this is the location that we're thinking of that. I also want to ensure, as our conversation earlier today, I just want this on the record. I want to ensure that this has room for a Police Department substation. We need that, I think, on the far west side. If we don't today, we are going to need it once a couple of big developments are out there. Um, and a community space, a community room needs to be included in that building when we get to that point, but I just really, nine-thousand South seems awfully far south when our city goes up to sixty-two-hundred out there. I'm just really concerned about the location. And then the last thing I want to share is, I don't believe that I approved a, a separate infrastructure thing. I believe the vote that we took as a council was on a total package that included infrastructure and I'm frustrated that that it didn't occur with what we had agreed to when we signed off on it. So I just kinda want that included. Otherwise, yes, we need a future fire station somewhere on the west, farther west side. It is needed. And we all know, know that we need a water tank as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Back to Councilmember Green.
Another question. Since Councilmember Whitelock asked, I'm gonna, I'm gonna follow up with that. The original discussions for this fire station were out on U-one-eleven. And it was gonna be farther west. Why are, why are we putting it at sixty-something, whatever that is, sixty-ninth West, whatever it is? Why aren't we going farther west when the Holly Park Station seems to be only twelve block, ten, twelve blocks away?
You know, I, I think that is a, a question that's best responded to by Chief Maxfield. Obviously, the intent of any sort of public safety service is to have three-sixty coverage. And so the closer we get, obviously, to the okers, then we limit, obviously, response on one side of a service area. But I know Chief Maxfield and Mr. Lee were involved in conversations relative to the sighting of this project. I also wrote in response to Councilmember Whitelock's comments relative to a community room and a police substation. I know that that was part of the con- consideration and discussion. It has always been part of that consideration prospectively, that those resources be included as part of any future build, so. I don't know, Chief, if, or Corbin, if you.
Yeah, let me speak to the location of the fire, the land, uh, dedication or the land acquisition for a possible future fire station. Um, four points I wanna make on this particular piece of property. Uh, one, prior to um, identifying possible locations for a future fire station, we did a pretty thorough uh, very detailed analysis of where a future fire station location should go. In that analysis, uh, there were options for a build out of six fire stations in the future or five fire stations in the future. Uh, I challenged the fire department to uh, find the best locations to operate five fire stations in the most efficient and effective locations possible to service the city. Uh, and do so effectively, uh, to manage our long-term costs, but also provide the very best service and delivery. In that, in that study, there was kind of an area of ideal fire station locations. That area, that range of fire station location ranged from as far north as eighty-six-hundred north and as far south is about ninety-two, ninetieth south to ninety-two-hundred south. Um, and near U-one-eleven, out near, you know, kind of in that range. Uh, the reason they had such a broad range north to south is depending on if we needed to shift other fire stations further to the north because UFA closed their fire station on fifty-six-hundred West. Because really, our service delivery hole is not in this area. Our service delivery hole rather would have been in the Ocker Shadows area if the UFA station remains closed. As UFA has indicated to us, they plan to reopen their station. It allows us to uh, keep our current station, uh, Station Fifty-Five located where it is currently. And that means the ideal placement for this station moves a little bit further south, closer than ninetieth south. We selected a location that was not right on the corner of U-one-eleven and Ninetieth South for a couple of reasons. One, U-one-eleven's gonna have a very large build out in the future. That makes direct access onto U-one-eleven challenging for fire trucks. Um, so an ideal location was not directly on U-one-eleven, but close to U-one-eleven. Uh, two, we felt like this site on Ninetieth South, near U-one-eleven, but not directly on U-one-eleven, gave this station great flexibility for east-west response and north-south response. As you know, sometimes stations go out of service for training and other things. That allows this station to be more flexible with Station Fifty-four opening or closing. This site, uh, can, as Councilman Whitelock, as you referenced, this gives us an asset on a hard corner where an arterial and collector meet. It's a very, very good and strategic piece of land. That if for some reason it doesn't ever be used as a fire station, it is a good asset, a good piece of land to acquire and control. And so for all those reasons, we really liked this site and selected it.
Any further questions from council or a motion regarding Resolution twenty-three dash zero four eight?
I need one more comment. I'm sorry. Um. This was my fault. It was not included in a budget amendment for last year, which I thought was a carryover for this year. It was smack in the middle of our cyber incident and it was one of the things that I just realized I dropped. So there is no budget for this land acquisition outside of a future budget amendment. If you approve the agreement this evening, I can bring a budget amendment to you immediately following in the next couple of weeks. My apologies. That was for both fire and water.
Then, then I'm gonna ask the question to the city attorney. Can we authorize a resolution that authorizes the uh, the signing and the purchase of a piece of property when there's no money there to pay for it?
I, I would recommend that we hold off on uh, approving the resolution at this point, based on that information that we just got here.
I, I, with that information, I am going to move to postpone the approval of uh, Resolution twenty-three dash zero four eight until we can adopt the, the, the budget amendment and the resolution at the same time.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Green, second by Councilmember Whitelock. Any discussion to the motion?
May I just make a comment?
Um, we have a motion and a second on the table, so. With that, let's turn, unless you want to withdraw the motion.
The motion's in front of us. We have to have another, we have to make a motion to withdraw and the whole council has to go for it procedurally.
Um, I'm I'm curious to hear what he has to. I move to withdraw my motion.
Okay.
Second.
Mr. Davidson.
You'll have to take a vote. If I may, members of the council.
No, we, we
Oh, I'm sorry.
On the withdrawal of the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? All right. Now, Mr. Davidson.
Thank you. Uh, one of the provisions of the agreement as negotiated with the attorneys representing the Jones family would be that we close on this transaction by the thirty-first of July or an additional time as requested. No, the thirty-first of July of twenty-twenty-three, unless I, I know we are past it, but the provision in the agreement also notes, unless both parties agree to extend that, uh, that relationship. In conversation that I had with the Jones's attorney, I made the representation and request that we be given until this date, given our current council calendar to accommodate the signatures on these agreements, and their attorney didn't have a problem with that. I just wanna make the council aware of that consideration. And if we are to proceed forward and request some additional time, that is something that I would also have to receive approval from Mr. Jones's counsel.
But I don't see how we're legally able to obligate the city for a purchase of property without the funds there. And so, uh,
And, and I don't, I don't have a
And the city attorney says that, the city attorney just contradicted you, so I somebody tell, somebody give us a good opinion because right now I'm not, I, I'm not willing to pass a resolution if we don't have the funds in the budget.
Let's chair, may I just chime in? Please. Um, I just got some information to help me better understand the circumstances, that we do have the funds available that have been budgeted for this. And based on that, I would be comfortable with approving the resolution tonight.
So, let me clarify then. Sorry, I can't. The funds. Okay. For state law and Utah State Code and everything else, our city budgets, like, by detail, right? But the requirement from state law is that the water fund expenditures do not go over what you budgeted. We have not expended over what you would budget and we have not expended. You could use this and divert the funds to this, similar to what you would do with council contingency, right? You say council contingency, well, I wanna spend it on youth council within the council budget. As long as it's in with, within the department expenditures or the funds expenditures, you are free to expend them as you need them in that budget. This council is chosen to say that you are only allowed those line items, but the council overall would not be breaking state code and would not be breaking state law in any way by saying, we're gonna authorize this expenditure, but we expect a budget amendment to come back because we know there are other expenditures in the water fund that would need those. By saying, we're going to authorize this expenditure, but we expect a budget amendment to come back because we know there are other expenditures in the water fund that would need those funds. I'm not saying that's right or wrong, it is an option for the council. The Fire Impact Fee Fund also has those, that same funding. The funds are available, have already been budgeted, and the Fire Impact Fee Fund enough to purchase this property. It was originally budgeted for debt service, it would require that the council approve a budget amendment in two weeks. Should the council request that a budget amendment come back in two weeks and then look at this land acquisition, that would work too. I just don't want the council to feel like their hands are tied by um. The bottom line, the bottom line of the department's expenditures is where your hands are tied. You cannot exceed a department's expenditures.
Questions for Ms. Stack, we'll start with Councilmember Whitelock, then Councilmember Green.
Well, I don't know if it's for Ms. Stack or Mr. Davidson, but I'm just curious if we were supposed to have this done by July thirty-first. Why we're getting it on today? Why we didn't get it in July?
When we were finalizing the agreement, we did specifically have this conversation with Mr. Jones's attorney or his family attorney. And I outlined our council schedule and how we would not be able to present. At the uh last scheduled meeting in July, and Mr. Jones's attorney agreed that he was comfortable extending that uh signature period. As noted in the agreement until August. So that is the reason that we are here today, we didn't feel, I didn't feel a need. To call together a special meeting, provided that there was a provision in the agreement that allowed us to go beyond July thirty-first. Provided both parties consented, and both parties did.
So what exa, I mean, we've extended it till August now, what's the harm of? Two more weeks, what if, I don't.
I don't think there's, I, I don't think there's going to be a concern, but I want to disclose to you the fact that that provision was in the agreement. And that accommodation was made for this date, and if we send it into a future council meeting. For a budget amendment, do we not require public noticing, and will it not extend beyond two weeks? Then we can bring it back in two weeks, so.
I, I guess my concern is we're missing some of the paperwork, we haven't got the budget amendment. It, it just makes it hard for me to cast a vote. With things aren't how they, how I feel they need to be.
We only need a twenty-four hour notice for a budget amendment, we could bring your budget amendment back on, on August sixteenth, if you'd like to consider it during your. You could open a meeting during that committee of the whole, right at the beginning, or you can go to August twenty-third. And I, I'll have it ready as soon as, as you need it.
My. So my, my question on this one, would we have to have a budget? We have, with the truth and taxation hearing that's happening later this month and the adoption of the final budget. Do we need a separate amendment, or can that be added to, to what we're planning on, what is that, the twenty-third? Councilmember Green.
My concern. And I hope I don't come across this too terrible here. My concern is. That it seemed presumptuous. That the council's going to pass this on August ninth, and we made assurances that. Where, where it'll get, it will, will extend the deadline past the thirty-first of July to August ninth, because the council will pass that. That concerns me, do you know where I'm going with that? Because, because. Your staff can't make that promise. You, 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 you've heard some concerns. And uh, to, to. And, and, and now it puts us, what I'm going to say is. It puts us in a bind because what you're saying is we have to pass it tonight. Which this council has always said, we don't like passing things at the last minute because it costs, it, it causes problems. You have to pass it tonight, or we have to go back to the attorneys and renegotiate. Um, that we can extend the deadline, and what happens if that attorney says no, and the whole deal falls apart? Are, are the, are the Jones willing to walk away from one point three million dollars because we missed the deadline? I don't know. But. It puts, it puts my vote in a rock and a hard place because it seems like we have to vote for this tonight. Or if we don't vote for it tonight, we don't know if we have a deal in two weeks. Um, and, and that's, that, that's where I'm sitting with the, with the concern here.
Councilmember Worthen.
Um, uh, really where I sit is, I, I don't like being rushed on things, and when we don't have everything complete and I's dotted and T's crossed. I've watched previous councils and other situations, and, and it's just, I don't like doing things like that. I like to make sure that all the I's are dotted, T's are crossed, and we're just making sure we're doing it right, that's all. Won't be, but it's not.
Obviously, if I may, that was not the intent.
Of course not, of course it wasn't the intent, but it is what it is.
And if you.
There's no ill intent, that's all I'm saying.
If you are inclined as a council to, to, uh, uh, as Councilmember Green noted, to postpone this vote. I completely understand, and will uh work with the parties to um, to bring this agreement back in two weeks.
All right, so doing my best to count to four here, I. I will move that we postpone Resolution twenty-three dash zero four eight to our next regular city council meeting.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember McConaughey, second by Councilmember Worthen, all in favor?
I.
I. opposed? Okay, two weeks. As fun as that one was, let's move on now to business item B. Which is the modifications to our general business regulation and licensing requirements. And this one is, let's see. I had it up just a second ago. Mr. Anderson.
Yes, council, um, the, the reason I'm, I'm introducing this to you is this is coming back, it was uh. Assigned to the staff to work on the additions and the amendments that the council asked for at the previous, I think it was two meetings ago, and. Uh, when Brock was here. And so this is now back with those amendments, uh, for any other questions or for final adoption.
All right.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna move to approve ordinance twenty-three twenty-five, amending general business regulation or licensing requirements. Section four-one-eight-one through four-one-D-five inclusive.
And I second.
Motion by Councilmember Green, second by Councilmember. Wow.
Welcome to my world.
Yeah, all right, any discussion to the motion, Councilmember Whitelock?
I just want to thank all of the staff and council members that worked on this, we uh worked on this for quite a while. I, I think it was last Christmas, Brock. So, thank you, I, I think we've landed in a much better spot than we were, so thank you to everyone.
All right, not seeing any other lights, we'll look to Ms. Quick for a vote.
Thank you, Councilmember Pack.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bloom.
Yes.
Chair McConaughey.
Hi.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Worthen.
Yes.
Thank you, that motion passes six to zero.
All right, next item is a budget discussion with items that were requested by the council specifically. Well, we'll uh have Ms. Stack come up and run through them, specifically the two items that were requested. Were review of the actual tax revenues received from the county, as well as impact of potential changes to property tax. Ms. Stack.
Okay, click. Click away, Alan. Sorry. Um, so council, we're, um, we, I was asked to prepare a, a short presentation for you regarding um property tax. To kind of give you some information ahead of time, and then, um, and then this would be your time for open discussion as to um. How you would, or if you need more information, or how you would like to treat the property tax increase. Um, so this is the discussion that, um, I remember when you adopted the budget, one of the things that you said was that. You know, one of the reasons that you wanted to do this was to allow yourselves more time to consider. Um, the budget as a whole and uh property tax increase, and you would be able to have more information from the county, so this is that time. Um, the council's philosophy or policy um regarding property tax increases is that. They, that you know that the property tax is the most stable revenue source for the city. Um, sales tax, as you know, um, is kind of goes up and down, uh, as, as economics go up and down. Uh, the council in the past two years, this would be the third year, have, um, chosen to discuss small inflationary property tax increases each year. To avoid double-digit increases, kind of a no surprises philosophy, so that when someone gets their tax bill in September, they're not. I'm surprised and having to pay a bill by November first that might be thirty percent higher than what they had anticipated for the city. Um, and then to tie those increases to a CPI of some sort, as well as the five-year forecast, so there's some financial sustainability there. And that the five-year forecast had an intentional transfer to the CIP. These are all things that we've discussed over the last three years and things that the council has supported up until this point. I can't click the button here, click. Um, just some information about the general fund, I heard today from um some parties that were concerned that our property tax increase. Is directly going straight to the CIP fund. Yes, it is, because we didn't want to tie up some of the things that would have been tied up, had we tied it directly to something else. Um, this year, the council approved all of these new positions in the budget, they added up to nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Almost the exact amount of the property tax increase. Um, we dedicated sales tax growth to those new positions, as you can see there on the left. And we dedicated property tax to CIP funding, we could just have easily said. We're dedicating this property tax increase to these new positions and, and dedicating a portion of sales tax to the CIP funding. Really what it's about is the total fund, the total general fund and the revenue sources available to the general fund. And whether the council wants to dedicate savings to the CIP fund, or have that intentional transfer to the CIP fund. It's also to support whether the council's philosophy of the small inflationary tax increases to avoid the no surprises later. Um, just as an FYI, last fiscal year, where we have our actual audit numbers. Our original budget to our actual budget savings was um one point three percent. We don't game the budget to you or to our taxpayers, right? We give you a responsible budget that we know that we have not inflated, so that we just have additional savings at the end. Um, I've heard from the Utah Tax Payers Association that they don't support this kind of philosophy. Because they say you should only do a tax increase when you absolutely need it. Um, that might be the case, but, but when you do do that, or when you do go to the market in that fashion. Um, you're looking at not having a continual CIP transfer and only relying on savings to do so that. And you'll watch cities game their budget, they will inflate their budgets so that it will look like they need property tax increases. We've never done that, in the, since I've been here anyway. Um, and so you have a very responsible budget that, that you have prepared, um, and added to and cut. Again, I can't, I can't click, I need to just keep my hands behind me.
Just real quick for the recording, want to make sure it's noted that Councilmember Jacob was able to join us at seven oh two after performing his duties with the water board.
Thank you. All right, so this is a slide, I'm showing you our property tax revenue and the certified rate and then our proposed rate. So last year, our property tax rate was point zero zero one four seven six. Um, the property tax dollars with new growth from last year were one, um, seventeen million eight hundred and sixty thousand five hundred and twenty-eight. You'll see that red number changes right back up into that certified rate. We don't get any dollars for inflation, we don't get any dollars for anything outside of anything. So no matter what property values do, whether they go up or down, we get the same dollar for dollar. Um, and then we add our GL bond debt to that. Uh, we had five hundred and seven thousand dollars of new growth last year, and we were hopeful that we would get the same this year, and we did. We got five hundred and four thousand four hundred and ninety-eight dollars of new growth. So our total certif, under the certified rate would have been nineteen million one hundred and nineteen thousand six hundred and nine dollars. We are proposing a four point eight percent increase. Um, which would buy, um, rise on new growth revenue as well as our basic property tax revenue. For a total of nine hundred and eighteen thousand. As a mark-to-market, our inflation for the same time period between June of twenty twenty-two and June of twenty twenty-three is five point seven percent. So the requi, the increase is um less than that. Next slide. All right, this is what a property tax notice would look like for an average property um in our city, so this is an average home in our city. Um, and you can see that the increase was eighteen dollars and seventy cents to the average home with that um small increase that we proposed. Next slide. Um, this is the dollar, and this is current, this isn't from last year, it was somewhere slide, I just changed the preparation. Um, the, again, the city receives fifteen cents of every dollar of property tax paid to the city. And you can see that the rest of it goes to the school districts, the county, and the other districts. Next slide. Our city still remains, um, one of the most affordable places on a home mill business, you can tell where we are now. Um, this is based on what cities have said that they are proposing for this next tax year. So you can see that, um, we're under the middle, but um far less than many of the cities. Uh, you can see if you lived in Harriman, your tax would be well over eight hundred and twenty-five dollars a year, where our tax is about four hundred and six dollars a year.
Chair, may I ask a question? Um, can you just clarify the asterisks on the cities?
Absolutely, so the asterisks on the cities mean that we have included the police and fire districts. A lot of these cities have property tax that is just dedicated to public safety. Um, and we include public safety in our property tax, so Harriman and Riverton both broke out their public safety, and they said, all right, we're going to put a tax. Property tax value to support the fire department. So all of the fire department is only paid by property tax, nothing else is dedicated towards that. Their sales tax is dedicated to city operations.
I was gonna say, in fact, I was gonna say, in fact, I think in Riverton, the city, the city government itself is not funded at all. By any property tax, it's all, it's all fi, it's everything that we do but property tax. Um, and, and so they, they all the time tout, our city doesn't have property tax when. It's true, because they have a police and fire district that are different.
Right, and, and if we were to do the same thing, um, just as an FYI. Our property tax only pays for seventy percent of the police budget and none of the fire budget. So it would be well over double what our current tax is. So we dedicate sales tax to that, next slide. Okay, so, um, the council requires, um, has asked for, um, and this came specifically from Councilmember Whitelock. Asked for what, what did the council do on the budget that would have changed things, right? So, um, the council asked for a property tax increase, um, or supported a property tax increase. When we budgeted, we didn't have the exact numbers yet from the county, so there's a rounding difference of about three thousand one hundred and five dollars. So when you saw the last slide, it said nine hundred and eighteen thousand, that's the real property tax, this is the one we put in the budget, um, based on our math. Um, the council, uh, has chosen to, or it could be said, um, we added a transfer to the CIP with those same funds. Uh, the property tax new growth was not in yet, and so we added that to the budget, and we reduced our sales tax revenue estimates by that exact same amount. So we brought them down. Um, we increased the transfer from the streetlight fund because we increased the fee at the streetlight fund level for a dollar a month. Um, and we funded the, um, some could say we funded the citizen academy or explore program. And then we reduced the budget for healthy West Jordan by five thousand dollars, so you can see dollar for dollar kind of where. And those are not meant to be like, this came to this, or this went to this, but dollar for dollar, we remained with a balanced budget overall. In the capital projects fund, um, then we would receive that money that was transferred over, so nine hundred and two thousand of it's coming from what the council changes were. And then there were some other changes that were done with compensation with the fire department or the council office. Um, couple of things that were more administrative on the backside that you approved. Um, but that provided, and more additional revenue, we had an RDA administrative fee, court fines were adjusted, those kinds of things. Um, that added to the transfer as well. What the council did in the capital projects fund was to add a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars of, um, mostly equipment. Orchard replacements, um, and added a public art program. So the council did not spend that total transfer, the council requested just a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars of additional, um, projects. There any questions about any of these items? Okay. Next slide.
Oh, sorry, go ahead. On the sales tax, when we bring it down to the five oh four, four ninety-eight, so what percentage? On the sales tax, when we bring it down to the five oh four, four ninety-eight, so what percentage of that is, where are we saying of an increase? Like, we were predicting twenty percent, now we're predicting what?
I love that you asked that, because I have a slide and two slides from here.
Okay, and then, when we're done, not you probably, because you don't have a clicker, but Mr. Anderson, can you go back? I think it was your second slide. I would like um to take a screenshot of that. It was the police, fire. Yeah, that one. Thank you.
Um, and this presentation is actually in PrimeGov, and you can pull it down at any time.
But that slide isn't in mine, unless you added it.
Oh, you know, I added it and they needed, they'll they'll add it. I'm sorry about that. Yes. Yes. Okay. Um, and then for the, whoops, next slide. Utility funds, um, we did add the mobile water distribution center, which was a a use of resources. Um, we added resources in the collection fees for solid waste and the dumpster rentals, and we added resources for the streetlight fund. Um, and we dispersed those resources directly to new streetlights and a transfer to the general fund. And then um I'm grateful for the IT management fund for the hundred thousand dollars of new software and admin services. Next slide. Um, here's our sales tax slide. So thank you, Councilmember Whitelock, for leading into this one. Um, I kind of wanted to give you a glimpse of what is sales tax, right? We had a philosophy and we have a philosophy. And um whether we want to follow that now or make a a change, that is up to the council's discussion. Uh, so the top half of this is the actual corrections. So we we had a philosophy, because things were so volatile between that COVID era. These are going up and down by double digits, uh that we were only going to count on two thousand nineteen. That was our beginning year. And we're gonna say in two thousand nineteen, and we're gonna go five percent year over year. You see a bigger jump in two thousand twenty, because we had a new sales tax that came into our city. It was two point two million dollars. That was the transportation fourth quarter of a quarter. It came in, so there's a little bit of a bigger jump there, but after that, it was like five percent every year. And anything in excess of five percent, we're gonna say it's one-time money. It's going to the CIP, or it's going to one-time whatevers, right? So that's how we've been operating, and it really has helped the city um be a little more financially sustainable, especially with the CIP fund. To not be dependent on sales tax, as we were not sure how how um spending would continue. In that, at that same rate of growth um going forward. So in two thousand twenty-three, um there is one month of estimate still in there. Uh, we believe that we'll get thirty-two point nine million dollars of sales tax, which is point five percent increase over last year. So we're almost seeing flat, right? Which is the first time we saw these double-digit growth, double-digit growth, double-digit growth. Oh, flat, hold on. Um, so this philosophy has really helped well for us, that um Utah League of Cities and Towns contracted with Econo West in May of twenty twenty-three. And they did, they released a forecast, and it said that our city would collect thirty-one point six million. So they were off by about four percent for this year. If we continued with the five percent projection, um our budget would have been twenty-nine point three million dollars. Anything in addition to that would have been considered one time. That would have been an eleven percent drop from our actual collections in two thousand twenty-two. Um, we felt like that was a little too aggressive, that we weren't sure that sales tax would really drop eleven percent. Um, and we didn't have any one-time expenditures that would be using one-time funds. Knowing that the mayor prepared his budget, you'll see on the third line down from the bottom there, at thirty-one point seven million. Um, anticipating about a three point eight percent drop from our actual corrections in two thousand twenty-two. Uh, ULCT then released their study, and they anticipated a four point seven percent drop. And then the council requested that we use our new growth and reduce their production even further to a five point four percent drop. So you can see that the council's budget tends to be a little more um conservative with sales tax. Uh, anticipating a five point four percent drop from our actual corrections in two thousand twenty-two. However, it is a variance from what our philosophy was previously, which was five percent year-over-year profit sales tax growth. That said, um, to be candid, there was no way for us to get all of the things that were included in the budget. Through the budget without either asking for a use of reserves or the use of one-time funds, which are reserves to fund that budget as a whole.
Question or comment from Councilmember Green?
Yeah, my, my comment is, we tried to maintain that five percent growth. And we're talking about heading into potential, I'll use the R-word, uh recession. And the sales tax is going to go down according to ULCT, four and a half, four, four point seven percent. What we're doing, and he- here's my concern, is that we've always set aside. Some money for sales tax as a buffer, and we're not doing that this year. There's, there's no buffer. The buffer, the the buffer that we should have. We're short two million. I mean, if we were doing five percent, we're two million short of what we're into. And and we're, we're using all of our sales tax money, and, and so what happens next year? If the economists are right, and the recession carries into eighteen months. And. So that's one comment. The, the second comment that, and and I almost, I almost would just say, look. Part of the reason we have reserves is for bad economic times, I almost rather use reserves to tell you the honest truth. The, the other, the other thing that I'm concerned with, and I, I'm gonna reiterate this going into. Uh, our final bu- our, our final month of budget. Uh, Mr. Anderson, if you want to go back. To the one that had all the staff positions. I, I'm gonna tell you, I don't disagree with the fact that we need new officers and we need, but my concern is. Government this year grew twice as fast as the property tax growth. With no growth in sales tax. That still, I like it, it concerns me. Uh, I, I don't know how to, to deal with that, but it concerns me that the growth money is five hundred thousand dollars. And we're growing the government by twice that much. And, and I, these positions are necessary, but. We've got to recognize as a council that we cannot, because next year, I, I'm gonna tell you, next year. There ain't no, there ain't no group, new growth money. Am I close in saying that, that new growth mu? I just don't think there's gonna be a whole lot of new growth money, given, given what I've seen being billed in the city. I just don't see any new growth money. I'd be surprised. And so. This new growth probably got to cover a couple of years, and that's not the best fiscal policy. In my mind, but that's me. Um, but I do have, I do have a, a question um that, that relates to this budget. If we have surplus in the budget, we have money that would go to the reserves. Can reserve money be transferred back to the enterprise fund?
Say again what you're asking.
So, so, okay, i- if, Alan, if you want to go back to, go forward to the, to the years worth of the budget, the sales tax. And, and those kind of things, eh, that one. So let's, let's say in FY twenty-two. Um, we got, we, we had six million, one, six, one eighty-six and one-time funds. Can those can, could, let's just say, one point seven million out of. The, the one point seven of that, uh, six point one, could it be transferred back to the enterprise fund? To cover and, and be used for CIP in the water fund. You see where I'm going with that?
You cannot transfer from the general fund to the water fund, or the CIP fund to the water fund. The enterprise fund has to be a standalone. So the water fund is kind of off on its own. It's almost like you're a separate company. Um, you could, uh, there would be. It would take a long time for me to say this, uh, but you could transfer the capital projects funds back into the general fund. Should you have an emergency. However, council, this has been an incredibly responsible, fiscally responsible council. I, I can't even recognize the SUSE financials from the day I got here. They're not, and it, they're not even the same. They're not the same. You have done an incredible job. We have reserves on the general fund, sufficient to sustain ourselves through some economic hardship. That said, there's also, when you've talked to your constituents in the past, I, I've heard. And I think we heard it also at the FES, um, you know, when, when they were upset and saying, why haven't we heard about this before now? We don't want these huge increases. Um, they didn't want a surprise. And so this, this inflationary tax increase philosophy that you have followed for a couple of years has really bode well for you. Because you have been able to address financial concerns with a stable revenue source in small incremental amounts, right? It was eighteen dollars um to our residents, and I'm not saying eighteen dollars is not worth anything. It is worth something. But cumulatively, what it is worth is that you're not doing a seventy or a hundred and twenty-dollar increase in two years. Versus a twenty-dollar increase over three years and getting there easier. That, you know, that, that's a philosophy for the council, but um Councilmember Green, your question was really, do we have a place that we. Can bring this back into the general fund? If things got really bad, yes, we do have a mechanism to do that out of the capital projects fund back into the general fund. But the general fund is, is holding reserves that are more than sufficient um for us to sustain ourselves. Through several years of an economic condition.
No, the, the question that it, that, that I'm asking more of is that we do an enterprise fund transfer every year. Yet our reserves well exceed that enterprise fund transfer, double in the last two years. And, and so what I'm wondering, so what I'm, what I, what I'm trying to figure out is. If we ended up having one-time monies that were seven million dollars. How can we help? So that that water money could actually be used for increase, to speed up water infrastructure projects. Instead of an enterprise fund transfer. And, and so I, I'm just trying to figure out, is there, you know, is there a way? That we uh hold back, we, 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 we set aside money in the enter, in the enterprise. You know, the question is, do we have to approve the enterprise fund transfer in July, or can we anticipate? Almost a game, the system, can we anticipate a little bit higher sales tax? If it doesn't come, if it doesn't come in, then we, we can make the enterprise fund transfer uh to cover that. But if we don't, then at the end of the year, we transfer that money to uh. The water fund, um, improve, you know, capital funds, and you, so I'm, I'm just trying to get a perspective. Because, you know, the, the, you know, you go back into twenty twenty twenty, and the look was really, y- you know. Uh, y- y- you could talk to the former council member, Lamb, back there in.
In two thousand eighteen.
Um, and when we, we, we increased, we increased water, we increased water rates. And then uh saying that we needed to balance, and we, we, and we did some other things to clean up the water fund. But then, oh, now we have, it almost appeared, like we get accused of, we have extra money that we need to transfer to the. Uh, that we can use as a tax, and, you know, it would, it would be nice to use some of that. Two and a half million that we transfer every year to um improve. Water and sewer infrastructure. You know what I'm going?
I would, um, I would just kind of let you know that the sewer, or the water utility and the sewer utility and stormwater utility. The utilities themselves have um have enough money to do their capital projects. There's never been a time when I've been able to. When I've had to say, hey, we need to slow this down, or, or we can't do this project. It's the impact fee piece of them that are lacking. That's where we're struggling, right? So um building water tanks that are needed for new development, you have to build a water tank ahead of the development. And so a lot of times the impact fees aren't collected for ten or so more years, and so the utility ends up carrying it for. Some time period until that money is repaid. But the utilities, I understand the utility transfer issue. But it can't be something that's turned off and on, because that adjusts, that's the rate, right? Then the rate would have to be changing on a continual basis as well.
Councilmember Jacob, and then Councilmember Worthen, and then we can get back to the presentation.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to bring up just a couple of things that are just, I don't know, counter is not the right word. Just put in my kind of two cents worth, since we're talking about money. Um, sorry, that was a joke. Bad joke. I got some fun water news to share with you too, but we'll share that at the end. Um. When, in two thousand twenty, we laid off a bunch of people to balance the budget. So looking at just personnel numbers this year compared to growth this year, I think it's an incomplete picture. Yeah, it's one's twice as big as the other. But you also remember, we're, we're doing more with less than we've ever done before. So adding positions back in little by little, which I think this is a little by little. Ahead of this year's specific growth, it, it's, it's two different things. It's, it's saying, well, we only, you know, we only grew three apple trees last year. Why are we drinking orange juice? It doesn't make any sense to me. So. So anyway, that's just an incomplete, an incomplete analysis, just in my opinion. Um. And then all about the enterprise fund transfer, I'll just say again what I've said before. Let's have the discussion in January on the philosophy of whether. The utility fund should pay into the general fund for the impacts they have on things that the general fund does, pay for streets, pay for other things. That's a philosophical discussion. If we want to talk about if a water fund should pay the same taxes the cable company does. Because they use the roads the same way the cable company does. That's a, that's a philosophical discussion that we can have. Uh, but we need to do it not in the midst of the budget crunch, when we, when we've analyzed this thing seventeen different ways from Thursday. And uh, and now we're two weeks from approving the budget. So um, let's, let's put that on the agenda. Let's talk about that in January or February. And let's, you know, as the budget is being formulated, let's decide if that is a philosophy. Do we want to hold these other water payers or these other sewer payers that pay into that system? Do we want to preserve their tax-free status, which is kind of what we're making an end run around by doing this, you know, this uh, this transfer? Um, do we want to preserve that tax-free status for them? Because essentially, that's what we're, that's what that would do. If we do. Then great, let's talk about that. Let's talk about what the impact would be on the budget, what the property tax rate or sales tax revenue would have to be to make up for that. And we'll have that discussion. But this, I, I just maintain, I've said this last two years in a row, this is not the time to have that discussion. That discussion is six months from now.
Alright, Councilmember Worthen.
Okay, I'm just gonna, you know, dumb this down, because it's, that makes life easier. So if I look at this, it does for me. I don't know, I like rounds. Anyway. You, I mean, you said it, you're, you're looking at, we're expecting to go into a recession, so we're gonna have less sales tax coming in, right? Is that what we're saying?
That's the prediction.
Okay, that's, that's what this is saying. I'm dumbing it down here, that we're, we're thinking that people are gonna be spending less money, so we're gonna have less money.
We are bringing our sales tax revenue estimates below what we actually.
So we're gonna have less money to pay our staff, to take care of our city, and that's basically what you're saying. So rhetorical question, that means you don't answer my question. Why on earth would we build another building that will add to our ongoing expenses and put more stress on our people? Rhetorical.
Hey, I'll chime in really quick before jumping back to the presentation. I'm actually feeling a little bit more optimistic. The last Fed meeting went, but their comments were very positive. Earlier this week, we heard from Bank of America. Saying that uh they had previously been predicting a uh, well, let me just read it here. Bank of America is now expecting the US economy to experience a soft landing instead of recession, and its econ- its economist said in the research note this week. The bank's economist, who had previously forecast a mild recession for the first half of. The bank's economist who had previously forecast a mild recession for the first half of twenty twenty four. Revised their outlook on Wednesday, saying that they instead expect to see economic growth that dips below the trend without turning negative. So we're, we're predicting negative revenue. Um, most others have changed the forecast on that. The federal reserve, some of the larger banks that are out there as well. So having the negative growth on there, I, I think is still incredibly conservative, but personally, I'm very, very comfortable with, with what we have out there. So I'm not seeing any other lights, so if you want to continue uh.
That would be the end of my presentation, um, and I was just available for any questions if the council were to have any. Um, we are moving forward and. Um, obviously, it's helpful for us to know, um, if the council has any changes, we will be bringing with um. To you on the twenty third of August, the change in the budget for um this land acquisition. Um, that will be included when you adopt then on the twenty third. So what we will do is we will prepare the budget and we will call out those changes. Um, should the council, after they receive public comment on August twenty second, choose to change anything about the property tax rate or the property tax revenue. Will make additional changes as well um to the final budget. So what's going to be in your packet is going to be pretty much what you got for the tentative budget. Um, but we will discuss other changes that night and then we'll make another copy and, and make it be your adopted final budget.
Last question and comments from the council, we'll start with council member Green.
I got another question. So. If we choose not to. Increase taxes or increase that at a different rate. Because of the way we've done this, really, all we're going to do is re- reduce the transfer to C I P fund. Is that, is that a fair assessment?
That would be a fair assessment, but I think that the misconception that's been out there that I've heard. Is that you're only raising property taxes to transfer to the C I P fund. Well, that is not the case. The case is. We added that much in new positions throughout the city overall. Um, and that our philosophy is, is that we don't want to surprise our residents within, with a large increase at the end, like when it's. Dire straits, um, you are addressing issues as they come about. Um, and so that transfer is, yes, the easiest way for us to address it, but the council. Has the opportunity to amend anything in the budget on the twenty third of August. But the easiest thing, if you were to change the property tax increase, is to change the transfer.
Thank you, council member Whitlock.
So Chair, I guess I'm just interested in, I mean, eh, the five point four, I believe is what you landed on. Is that where the council wants her to bring it back at, or do we want a different amount there? Eh, I'm just thinking, yeah, that's about even, but do we want to go to that amount? Do we want it a little bit less maybe or? I don't know, I just be interested in knowing what the body wants before she brings it back next time.
Counsel, feel free to chime in if you're happy with what's been presented, if you'd like to see something different. Council member Jacob.
So are we talking the minus five point four percent?
Correct, the council's budget, as is prepared, the tentative budget is thirty one million one hundred ninety five thousand. Um, again, it would be great for me to have that feedback ahead of time so that I can prepare. Um, anything different if the sales tax revenue uh budget were to be changed.
Alan, I think the better slide for this is the property tax increase slide. Cause that's really what I want to know.
Oh, you're talking about property. They're both five percent, right? I apologize. Yeah, so um, sales tax revenue will leave the same, but you're asking is the property tax revenue. Thank you.
So, counsel, what's your level of comfort with what's been proposed? Is this what you'd like to see brought back in the final budget on the twenty third? Do you want to see changes? Council member Worthen.
Oh, I won't vote for a property tax increase, not with wants in the budget, but yeah, I can say that every time we're here, if you'd like.
All right. Council member Whitlock.
I, I am a little concerned that um. While I'm okay with a small increase, I'm not sure that four point eight is where we need to be. And there is for sure one position in the budget that I just, I just don't think now's the time for that position. So. I personally would like it a little lower if we're going to say yes.
Council member Jacob and then council member Bloom.
Um, I like it where it is if uh at four point eight, but if we are just because it's kind of tracking with inflation. Um, but if we are going to lower that by an amount, uh personnel is not where I would cut it from. I might cut some of the other programs that we, that we talked about doing, but I wouldn't cut. Um, personnel at this point. Like I said, we're still replacing people that we laid off three years ago. And I, I, I don't think we're back to where we should have been, had we not had to do that. So that's, that's not where I'd want to cut.
I concur. I, I'm comfortable where we at. If we were, in fact, I was gonna say the exact same thing, not cutting personnel. But if there's a little increments thing that we, that we wanted to add that we can cut out, I'm okay with that. If we wanted to get a little lower to compromise.
Council member Pack.
Great, thank you, Chair. I, I've always been a proponent, you know, very vocal on this smaller incremental tax increases on a. Consistent basis so that we don't kick the can down the road politically at the expense of doing what's expedient. For the community. I'm also noting that understandably so and no judgment. It's that a- all of us, of course, have different priorities on where we'd like to see money invested. Noting that we've had many conversations on these issues. I think it's safe to say that none of us have everything that we wish were in the budget or not in the budget. Uh, and that's good to have seven different points of view so that we minimize blind spots. I am concerned that. We do pass the budget and that we don't. Not for the double negative, not pass it. Uh, because if we all hold the budget hostage for our own. Personal reasons on why we don't think it should be passed, it would never get passed. So we're trying to find a sweet spot. Of where we can all live with it. Um, is, is everything exactly as I wish it were? No, in our deliberations and conversations, I think we've tried to find. An amenable area that's reasonable for all of us. Um, so I would be comfortable with the proposed change, recognizing we're talking about a dollar and a half or in my district. Perhaps upwards of two dollars a month. On property tax, uh given the current economic climate we're in, I believe that's an incredibly. Good rate as was mentioned where we land according to other cities. Of different sizes, uh but eh, no one likes a tax increase. While people want amenities and levels of service uh and services. Um, so I, I would be comfortable for where we are at this point. Thank you.
Council member Green.
The. Only thing that the council added to this budget for ongoing expenses was about forty thousand dollars. Ten K for, ten K for the uh explorer program and thirty K for the citizens. Academy. So if we're talking about reducing budget nickel and dime, there's. We only added, the, the, when we talked about, if it's something the council added, we only added forty K to the budget. The rest of it was one-time monies and I think that's appropriate place to spend. For the things that we're buying is to buy them out of one-time funds. My, my question. And uh I'm still undecided on this, but my question is. Um, and, and I'm, and I'm, I will just tell you, I'm leaning. Towards not voting for a four point eight po- percent property tax increase. The reason why is because. Jordan School District just raised property taxes again. And Salt Lake County Library System proposed a twenty five percent. Property tax increase again. And. Yeah, I, I mean, it, it, it only means like on this line, it, it means that it's four dollars a year. I got it. But when you look at. You know, Salt Lake County Library increasing. Are, you know. I guess it's eighteen dollars for us, it's two dollars a month. Um, but it, it's funny, the change is eighteen dollars. It's a five percent increase, but really it's only a four dollar increase because of the way the middle level. I- i- it's hard to explain how you have a five percent property tax increase that only. That's supposed to raise your taxes eighteen dollars, but it only raises them four. The property tax system is broke. Uh, but when you look at, but when you look at uh. When you look at county library that's adding money, you look at uh. Jordan Valley's gonna add, you know, seven. Jordan School District added twenty. Salt Lake County's at, as the county library's adding twenty six. We gotta pay for more water uh to the, to the tune of eleven dollars a month. Luckily, the mosquito abatement district is doing okay at the whopping two dollars and forty four cents mo- a year, so.
I think it's interesting, Central Utah Water, I've watched them for several years now, um, their tax philosophy. Is they will keep the same rate. So it has nothing to do with need, it has nothing to do with anything. They have had this same rate, they will go through truth and taxation every year and keep that same rate, no matter what.
Which is the max rate, by the way, that a water district's allowed to have.
It is the maximum rate allowed, that's right.
What is it? It's close to the point, it's point zero 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 four?
Yeah, triple O four, yeah.
Yeah, that's interesting. So they just adjusted to match the, the max, they're close to the rate. So that's where, that's where I'm coming from is, is I, I, I'm not sure that I want to, to increase the taxes when we got. And it's interesting, Jordan School District's two percent. Trump's are five percent at eighteen, in there anyway. Again, sales ta- or property taxes, we're.
That was because the teachers' union negotiated an increase and the school district said if they got an increase, they would have to go to tax increase.
Yep, um, so I'm not sure. Overall. The expenditure part of the budget, like I said, I still have concerns on sales tax projections and the amount of new growth. Uh, I think that. If, and, and, and council member Jacob's right, we did can't, we did, we did lay off forty people. Uh, a few years ago, but we didn't lay off police. You know, when we laid off the forty people, we didn't, we didn't reduce public safety, they, they, they were other positions. And we're increasing public safety now. So, you know, we've got it, we've. But given the growth in the city, we need the public safety, I'm just wondering if that growth. Um, is, uh, is appropriate. And so, you know, we, we, we look at, we, we just have to. I think that what, what I'm saying is, is that if we're going to grow like that this year. We've got to be super careful next year. We, you know. New growth can't, new, we can't, we can't hire more people next year. More than the new growth because the new growth probably has to catch up with what we did this year. So that, that's just my thought is that, you know, i- if we're going to increase staff. Because new, because of new growth, particularly, you know, and public safety needs it, don't get me wrong. But we have to be careful that next year we don't do the same thing because that will drive us into the hole. Really bad at some point in time. So that's, that's the only reason I mentioned that.
Council member Jacob.
Thank you. One more rebuttal point. I like your idea of looking at the tax bill as a whole. Look at the bottom number. Look at the very bottom number on twenty twenty two, this person paid twenty seven seventy eight and sixty nine cents in property taxes. If every taxing entity gets everything they're proposing this year, it goes down to twenty seven seventeen fifteen. And that's with all the increases. As defined by the state legislature. All the tax increases, there's, there's uh seventy six dollars and ninety six cents on this bill and tax increases. And yet your bill goes down by sixty one dollars. Tell me how that's a tax increase. When I pay less this year than I paid last year. As a total, as a sum. That's a decrease to me. I don't know about you, but uh, it's not the way it is on eggs or milk or, well, eggs right now, because they had that weird little bump. But milk or, or, or anything else that I buy gasoline for that matter, I'm not spending less on any of that. But I'm spending less on my taxes even when all these tax increases go into, go into effect. So I like the idea of looking at it as a whole, you're right. If, if, if you think that we shouldn't pass our tax. Increase again, and ours actually is a little bit of an increase, but um. But it's four dollars, it's about one percent. By the way, if you factor in last year to this year. With the increase, um, four hundred and two to four hundred and six, that's one percent. E- e- even if you factor all that in, you're still paying less. That's, that's not. Anyway, that's a tax decrease and I'm all in favor of tax decreases whenever we can, so that's cool. Yeah, anyway, we're keeping up with inflation by charging less. I like that.
The system currently in place by the state legislature for figuring out property taxes and how that is communicated. Certainly leaves something to be desired. Um, I think that'll be the understatement of the night. I don't see any other lights on. Is there anything else for Ms. Stack? Any other questions, comments on the budget before we move on from this item? Ms. Stack, do you have enough information to proceed for?
I do. Thank you very much. I appreciate the council's time.
All right, now that brings us to consent items.
I'll move to approve consent.
Second.
Motion by council member Green, second by council member Bloom to approve the minutes from prior meetings. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not seeing any, we'll rule that passes. Council meeting wrap up. City council remarks. We'll start with council member Whitlock tonight.
As was alluded to earlier, today was Bingham Creek's anniversary. They had so many people out there. Shout out to Anne Marie and all her staff and volunteers. Um, it looked like everyone was having a great time. They partnered with the school district to have a dog show. Over on the school district property, which was probably prudent, seeing as how there, that's a fenced-in area and not off of a busy. Uh, state highway like nine thousand south is. And everyone was having a great time. I can tell you that that library has been an asset in my family's life. It's. While my children don't necessarily agree that it's walkable, their mother did, and so we could walk there occasionally. And they just loved that. But they did like going and looking at the books and um, something different at libraries. And especially today, when I grew up, I don't know, the librarians were just different back then because. On more than one occasion, I got told. And today there was music, many children playing with video games, uh, regular games. Uh, the children's area, if you haven't been to Bingham Creek Library, is just a delight because there are benches on the periphery. And there's a train table and the little kids love it there. Just a great community asset. I'm glad that they are in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Council member Green.
I was just gonna say, congratulations to Bingham Creek Library for twenty five years. That was, that was a great community event and uh as we. Just for the council to keep in the back of their mind, when we discussed this Y two K survey results and community events and. And what people said bring them together as a community, we should consider those kinds of activities. Um, in the city, um, and maybe we can sponsor and help with more of those that. Uh, aren't costly, but help build community. So just. It was a great event and congratulations to Bingham Creek and all of their staff.
Council member Bloom.
Um, first I wanted to say how cool it is on Tuesdays with the food trucks and the vendors and as much of it was a pain trying to get.
as much of it was a pain trying to get there with a new driver and construction and having to turn left on Ninetheth with my fifteen-year-old. Um, no, I'm glad we went and the dog's headphones and it was great. Um, and the second thing is, uh, tomorrow morning I will be representing the city of West Jordan meeting with President Biden. I had an invite that came very unexpectedly, and so I look forward to um, having a photo op with our president tomorrow, um, on behalf of West Jordan. So, uh, I look forward to sharing those images.
Councilmember Pack.
Oh, thank you. Not trying to be redundant. I, I was gonna mention food trucks and the Bingham Creek Library as well. I moved into the city twenty five years ago. So I was here when it was constructed and how wonderful to have it adjacent to our elementary school, Jordan Hills Elementary, uh, wonderful connectivity there in the neighborhood. It's been fun walking my kids to and from school and the library. Uh, we too enjoy the food truck roundup and I believe that events like this allow us to connect as a community when we have destinations and events where we can congregate and join with others, meet new people, be with our families, be with our pets, as mentioned. Uh, so thank you, uh, mayor and, and staff for putting together opportunities for people to get together and also, um, other community involvement personnel such as the, the library, anything that we can do to establish community and gathering, I think is a wonderful opportunity to learn from others and meet other people so that we can get to know each other better and understand and have empathy as opposed to division. Thank you.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you. Um, as was mentioned, I recently, or I just came, I was late to this meeting because I was being waterboarded. Just kidding. It was not torture, but sometimes public meetings feel that way a little bit. Um, I was at the Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District, public caring for their tax increase, by the way. And I wanted to mention something that was mentioned in our regular board meeting earlier, uh, today, uh, at the water board. And that is, we know that July was really hot, right? We have this water delivery report we get every month from, uh, from the staff there. And we know July was really hot. We know we used a lot of water on our lawns. And we did use more than last year. We used six percent and West Jordan, Jordan Valley Water delivered six percent more water this July than last July. But that's a good thing. System-wide, they delivered eight percent more. Um, uh, most cities that are bigger than, uh, that are our size or bigger, in fact, none of the cities that they service are as big as West Jordan, besides West Jordan. But South Jordan City used eight percent more. Kern's Improvement District used eleven percent more. Harriman City used nineteen percent more than this time last year. So we for the, for the month of July. So our, our message that we have done as a council, when we've talked about water, we've talked about water rates and our building of infrastructure and things that we've done to increase our own local supply and take less from Jordan Valley so that we can pay, um, less because we know our water rates based on that peak volume, right? Well, our peak volume just went up half of what some of these other cities just went up for the, for the hottest month of the year. So we are going, our infrastructure, our, our, um, our investments that we have made over the last six, seven years, since we've really been kind of focusing on this, um, on this peaking factor and trying to reduce it and building our infrastructure, putting in more tanks, more wells, so that we don't have to buy as much water. That's gonna save us thousands upon thousands of dollars come the next rate increase because our peaking factor has gone down relative to the other cities that they service. Because we've made those infrastructure improvements. And that was just proof. We had, uh, three thousand four hundred and sixteen acre feet of, of water delivered in, in West Jordan from, from them last month, so. Figured I'd share that with y'all. And by the way, their tax increase passed.
Councilmember Whitlock.
Councilmember Jacob, I just curious, um, for their TNT, how many people showed up and spoke?
One.
Thank you.
Yes, one.
And how big's the district?
Most of the valley. It's about two-thirds of the Salt Lake Valley, yeah.
All right. With that, there are no administrative items to cover tonight. Therefore, I would look for motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Green, second by Councilmember Bloom. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? See none. Will that passes? Be stand adjourned.